Okay, I'll call the Monday, March 8th, 2021, meeting of the Oxford Planning Board to order. I'll first read the remote access provision pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 38, section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020, order concerning imposition on strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Meetings in the town of Oxford will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. We strive to provide access to such meetings via a link to call in or other similar options. In the event we are unable to accommodate the same, despite best efforts, we will post recorded sessions of the meeting as soon as possible, following the saying, no in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings. I'll do, I'll now do a roll call of Planning Board members. I'm Richard Scholz, I'm here. Jeff?
Jeff Stafford, I'm here.
Craig?
Here.
Okay, Christine?
Yeah.
And Dale?
Yeah, Mahoda, here.
Yeah, okay. All right, at seven o'clock, plans not requiring subdivision approval, we have none. I'll go down to action items. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes of February 8th, 2021.
I'll make that a motion.
Is there a second? No?
I don't think I can, Rich, right?
Craig, you were there.
I was not there.
You were not there?
No.
I looked at this app, so.
Wait a minute, I'm looking at all the people. All right, I'll second it.
Thanks.
I'll second it then.
Everybody else wasn't there.
I know, I know. The only other one that was Norman, he was, he's not here, so.
Norman just came in.
And Roger, Norman and Roger aren't here, so. Anyway, I seconded it. Any, any issues, any thing? Need to be corrected?
Norman just came on.
Okay.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Norman.
Oh, there's Norman.
There I am, sorry.
I missed you already. We needed you, we needed you, Norm.
I always come through in a pick.
Okay, good. Okay, we're talking about the minutes of February 8th. We, we have a motion, it's been seconded. I vote yes. Jeff?
I vote yes.
Greg?
I will abstain.
Okay, Christine?
I'm staying.
Dale?
I'm staying, please.
And Norman?
Yes.
Okay, Carrie? Entertain a motion to approve the minutes of February 22nd, 2021.
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion, any issues with those? There being none? I vote yes. Jeff?
I vote yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Dale?
I abstain.
Okay, and Norman?
Yes.
Okay, Carrie? Okay, everyone got in their package, the proposed zoning bylaw amendment, first one, chapter six, industrial districts, table three, use. Use table. And we already have a time set. Does anyone have anything they want to mention about those? Mary, those were these were official mailings to, to the selectmen, correct?
Correct.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
What was the, how did this come about wanting to allow hotels in the industrial zone? Was there a specific interest in it, or?
At one point, I think Wilson, what's, what's his name?
Wilson Language.
Mo Nixtendo, yeah.
Yeah, they, they literally, at one point, I, I think they asked for it, because they, they were having some sort of classes over there.
Yeah, you're right. Yes, yeah.
And I think with the way IPG is growing, there may be a need. Right now, they're going out, out of town to house visitors and whatnot.
Yeah, I remember that.
So I I don't know if it's going to do anything for us, other than give us the ability to take one on as a special permit. So at that, at that meeting, we decided that that was probably a feasible thing to do. Try to encourage economic development continuing in that sector of town.
That's true.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay, and then, then the next one was proposed zoning bylaw amendment for chapter 11, motor vehicle access, village business district.
Can I interrupt? Can you actually schedule the public hearing for that? Vote to schedule the public hearing for, for April, for industrial?
Is that what ATM means?
Yes, annual town meeting, sorry.
Okay. Sorry, all right. Going back to the first one.
Craig.
Yeah, yes, Craig?
I'll make that motion.
Oh, you'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for?
7:05.
7:05 PM on April 12th, 2021.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Jeff. Any more discussion? There being none? All those voting in favor? I vote yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Okay, Dale?
Yes.
And Norman?
Yes.
Okay, carried unanimously. Okay, now I'll go to the second one, the proposed bylaw, chapter 11, the motor vehicle access for the village business district packing for the May 5th, 2021, annual town meeting. We also have to schedule a public hearing on that one. Anyone have any issues with it, first of all?
I do.
Know the purpose, you know? Get some more packing for the businesses on Main Street. Using a wide road now, and I don't know what'll happen if it ever gets modified, but it gives us the ability to allow them to plan to use some of them. Okay.
If you don't mind me asking, so this basically is just going to allow a person that has a business to say, those parking spaces out on the street apply to my business? Is that what, is that what it is?
Basically, it allows them during the, during the site plan process to meet the table, the packing table, by designating so many out on Route 12, Main Street. We had one business that wanted to do that a little while ago.
So how does, how does it work when you have one business that, that uses that parking spots out in front of it, and then the person next door wants to do the same thing? Can they apply those parking spots to their business also?
Yeah, the way it's worded is the frontage of their lot is the number of parking spaces they can use.
Okay.
But through you.
Let's say that no one else would use it?
Right.
I don't know how enforceable that is.
It's first come, first served. It's just that we can, it allows us to meet the required number, but anybody can use it. Anybody can use it. It's not, it's not restricted just for that business owner. Anybody can use it. So if they have a customer and it's filled up, then they're going to park further down the street, that's all.
Right. Um, okay.
Okay. And this goes without even designating them as packing spaces at this time. We talked about maybe at some point having them marked on the road. That will probably come up as a topic of discussion on Main Street, too.
It will.
Okay, so entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for April 12th, 2021, at 7:15?
7:15, sure.
Yeah, let's not put them five minutes together. Let's, at least 10 minutes. We'll do other business in between. If we can't spend 10 minutes bantering about it, or have public interest, I know it's going to be tough for people to come in and talk about it, so.
I'll make that a motion.
Did anyone make that motion?
I'll make it.
Okay, second, seconded by?
I'll second that.
Christine got there. All right, thank you, Christine, seconded it. Okay, further discussion? There being none, I vote yes. Jeff?
I vote yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
And Norman?
Yes.
Carried unanimously. And the last one is proposed zoning bylaw amendment for chapter 13, cluster development for the May 5th annual town meeting, to schedule a public hearing for that one. Entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for April 12th, 2021, at 7:25 PM.
I'll make that a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Dale. Further discussion? There being none? I vote yes. Jeff?
I vote yes.
Greg? Christine?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
And Norman?
Yes.
Carried unanimously. Okay, next agenda item, we have a, under new business, we have a discussion with Jared Duval, the DPW director, for a discussion of proposed zoning management bylaw amendment and current DPW projects. And I say, welcome, Jared.
Thank you, thank you for having me. So I guess I'll dive right in, then, you know, I was asked to, to join the meeting tonight to talk about our stormwater management bylaw and some proposed revisions that Tony and myself have kind of been spearheading here, along with Conservation and Judy Lochner, as well as our consultant, Ty and Bond. And, you know, going, I would say, going back to my first tenure here, going back a few years, you know, having, you know, participated, I guess, in the implementation of the bylaws as it stands, actually going out, performing inspections, and really interacting with both, with pretty much everyone, all project stakeholders, you know, the engineers, the homeowners, or the project proponents, you know, the contractors themselves, you know, I think, I think, you know, myself and a few other people, I think, will attest that there's been some complaints as to the requirements of our stormwater bylaws as it stands and to the projects that we're capturing. It's, it's been a question, I think, and I don't want to speak for the board, but certainly I think there's been some feedback that we've heard from some members in the past that, you know, it's, it's a little onerous on some of these projects. And I really think of the single-family house project as sort of the main example. So what we're, what Judy had presented to me as I came on board here is that the town needs to revise our bylaw as it stands to incorporate some new requirements from DEP, so we're in compliance with our, our MS4 permit, and those need to be instated by June 30th. So we would be going to town meeting, looking to incorporate these requirements already, and we got to talking and thinking that this would be an opportune time to look at the bylaw holistically and consider revamping it, and really looking at the applicability criteria, applicability thresholds, to make sure we're really capturing the projects we should be, and then not placing too much a burden on smaller-scale projects that really we're not getting, you know, a real environmental benefit from. There's no, really, right now, our bylaw is, is much more strict than even some of the DEP standards. You know, if you look at, and I, I'm going to go back, I'll keep going back to the single-family house project, because that's where I've seen, you know, the most feedback on, and seen the impacts to those projects, is that, you know, DEP stormwater standards, so a project under conservation jurisdiction says that a single-family house is exempt from the stormwater standards and requirements, yet the local bylaw says that it applies. So again, we just, we think that there's an opportunity here, and I guess I'll back up a little bit and just touch on briefly the couple of requirements that the MS4, the new requirements that we need to incorporate by June 30th, and those are for new and redevelopment, for projects of an acre, disturbance of an acre or more, that the BMPs, the structural BMPs, or best management practices, that are proposed, need to optimize for nitrogen removal, which really is kind of part of this shift towards more green practices, low, low-impact development practices, that that must be implemented, LID must be implemented unless infeasible. And there needs to be more clarity with our ASBIL drawing requirements. These are things that our consultant had highlighted in an initial review, and that needs to be in there, it needs to be clear for MS4 compliance, and there needs to be an annual certification as well. So those are things in, that are not stated explicitly in there, that we need to put in there. So, and beyond that, again, what we're looking to do is, and we're still in the works with Ty and Bond in, in getting this drafted, but as it stands, and I'm sure you're all pretty familiar with the applicability flow chart that we had put into place some years back, you know, that was really in an effort to start, sort of better define which projects we should be capturing. And that was, you know, we put that into place, we've got that approved, and, you know, we've kind of been measuring our performance and looking at which projects we've captured over X amount of years, and still think there's improvement to be made. So right now, we have an applicability threshold, anything over 10,000 square feet of land disturbance or disturbance essentially requires a full permit review or full permit application, right, for stormwater and land disturbance. Anything underneath or below 10,000, or between 1,000 and 10,000 square feet, I should say, triggers that flow chart analysis. So we look at three criteria. We look at where the stormwater is potentially flowing, if it's flowing into a wetland, a, the town's right-of-way, or in a butter. We look at if the slope is greater than 10%, or we look at if the disturbance area is larger than 5,000 square feet. So with those thresholds, we really find that so many of the projects that come before Planning Board, and, you know, a lot of project proponents, they find that they're, they're applying for a stormwater management permit. And again, the, the cost in engineering, the cost to actually install these fixtures, maintain them, it's very onerous, and we're seeing that a lot of times that these systems that are, you know, installed are not always maintained the way they're supposed to be, so they're not really functioning as designed. So the, the environmental benefit, we're just, we're not seeing it. So that, that's kind of where we're at. The, the new or proposed bylaw would essentially look at the disturbance area threshold being set at an acre, which is what a lot of towns were finding, or neighboring communities have been doing. So anything over an acre of disturbance would trigger a full permit review and application. Then what we would do is sort of a two-tiered review process, is then anything from 10,000 square feet to an acre would trigger this administration, administrative review. And essentially, that would give us an opportunity to vet these projects, to see what is being proposed, but in a sense, relax the, I guess, the, the, the conditions that they would have to meet for their particular project. Now, if we find during the administrative review that, you know, the disturbance area is larger, or there's a particular issue with grade, or where the, the stormwater may flow to, then we can trigger a full permit review. So that's kind of what we've been tossing around at the moment. By the time that the warrant articles need to be submitted by March 30th, we'll have a, a copy of that bylaw, or proposed bylaw attached there, too. But tonight, I really wanted to take the opportunity to talk to Planning Board and sort of garner some feedback, you know, with our current bylaw and perhaps what the board would like to see in a revised version. So I don't know if there's any, any comments in particular, any, any feedback you'd like to provide?
So, so with that flow chart, Jared, so as long as they meet those three criterias, obviously, they wouldn't have to apply for a stormwater?
Yeah, I should, yeah, I should have explained that better. So the, the three criteria, it's actually, it's a, if you hit on two out of three of those criteria, so let's say you are disturbing greater than 5,000 square feet, and you have a lot that is over 10%.
Yeah.
Then, then it triggers the full permit review, you need to apply.
Okay.
So it's, it's a two out of three scenario. If you're only hit on one of those right now, then your project is exempt.
So say it's, say it's 20% grade or whatever than that, so that's only one, and that's the only issue that it has?
Yes.
You know, so that wouldn't trigger it, then?
It, it wouldn't, because in that case, we're looking, that, that would mean that your project, your site is not draining to the town's right-of-way impacting that negatively, or in a butter, or a wetland.
Okay.
And that would mean that the threshold, the area threshold is below 5,000 square feet, where we say that's just so, it's insignificant at that point.
Okay.
So that was the, the thought process there. But I, I think in practice, we found that really anything under 10,000 square feet, you know, that that's, unless it's a real extenuating circumstance, it's pretty insignificant typically.
Okay.
Okay, my question is, we've had a couple, what I call violations of any stormwater management plan that went with the lot, and it's always been our fear that the homeowners don't even know what these stormwater basins, dips, dipsy-doo's, and they add, or even four. Is there something? Is there something missing that these people that buy these properties don't know that they have to maintain those or whatnot?
I, I think that's, we run into that a lot, is that you find, you know, people that are looking to invest in the town, and, you know, they buy, and I'm going back to the single-family house projects again, but they buy a lot, and they're not aware of Oxford's requirements, for whatever reason. And then once they get into it, and they hire an engineer, and they, you know, start consulting with them, they find that there's a lot of hidden costs there, that they didn't necessarily anticipate, and then they're getting into something that they may not have intended with the, the maintenance of the system as well. I know I've heard of reports going back that people have filled in
Yeah.
detention basins after the fact. And it, and it becomes an enforcement issue, certainly, but, you know, with the more projects that we're capturing and permitting, and then with the follow-up inspections, it becomes, it becomes a capacity issue, too, to be able to manage it and, and manage the inspections and the enforcement after the fact. So I know, you know, even the bylaw itself, right now, it's, it's essentially two chapters we're looking at, is chapter 66 and 67, we've got, which really could be, the other thing we're looking to do is really consolidate that into one chapter, a more concise chapter, that perhaps is more, there's more clarity there, and maybe it's easier for people to understand, easier for implementation, you know, and, and for post-construction enforcement as well.
And Jared, who is the enforcement for that? Is that, if it's affecting wetlands or affecting, is that conservation? Is that your, your department?
If, if it falls within, yeah, if it falls within a buffer zone, it, it falls under conservation, but otherwise, it falls under, DPW is essentially
Yes, so.
enforcement leg.
Your office is the enforcement of these?
Yeah, yep. Planning Board's the permit-granting authority, and DPW holds much of the, you know, enforcement action responsibilities.
What goes, what goes on the homeowner's deed? Does anything specify that they have stormwater management
I don't believe.
plans that were built into their lot?
Yeah, Mary might be able to, to answer that better, but I don't believe we record. I could be wrong, though.
No, no.
That's to be something that should be changed, that.
It's not recorded.
Well, I'm wondering from a state point of view. I mean, they're, they're great at coming up with all these, you know, requirements, you know, but if it doesn't get to the homeowner, when he buys a certain property, hey, I got a plan that, that has to be, maintain a stormwater management system, and they don't even know what it is.
So.
They don't have any access to that information.
I agree, there's a disconnect there, because if it goes through conservation, and an order of conditions is issued, that gets recorded with the deed, but if the Planning Board issues stormwater permit, it doesn't get recorded.
It's just on the site plan, right?
Right.
And a homeowner is not looking at, when they're buying a house and a piece of property.
Yeah, they don't even look at a site plan. They don't get a site plan.
Yeah.
They get a completed product.
Right. And they say, oh, look at this big, look at this big dip in my front yard. I don't want that anymore.
No, I want, I want to hire someone to come in and level it out.
That's what's happening.
Yeah, you know.
There was a few questions for the revised bylaws to make sure it gets recorded at the registry of deeds.
Yeah. I definitely think it's to go on.
Rich, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Jared, so how many other towns have you worked in? Like, that would?
Well, I was here before for a few years. I went out to Brookline, you know, in, obviously, proximate to Boston, and, and they had their own requirements that were pretty onerous out there, but that's pretty typical. I mean, the, the closer you get to any major city, too, you're, it becomes more of a concern, because you have more impervious area, right? It's built up more. You know, there, for the sake of comparison, you know, we were trying to look at, or in Ty and Bond was looking at comparative towns, towns with, you know, rural settings similar to Oxford, and looking at what their requirements were. So that's, that's been the basis for, and we did that going back with the, you know, developing the flow chart before, and still found that we were probably more strict than surrounding communities. And, and that's, that's still certainly the case. And we're finding that even still, that so many years later, surrounding communities aren't getting more strict. I mean, they're complying with their MS4 permit, as we're seeking to do, and still be stewards of the environment. But again, it's just, I, I think there's room to just relax the, the requirements a little bit.
So is there, let me ask you a question. There's, this MS4 permit, that's like, all the towns have to adhere to that?
That's right.
So are, are Oxford's standards for this MS4, are we, what percentage do you think we are above that? That's required versus other towns?
Well, I, I go back, it's really, I think, based on the applicability criteria, you know, and you look at, it's typically driven by area of disturbance. Most towns, you will find, is that that acre, or if it's not an acre, they round down to 40,000 square feet. That seems pretty typical, that that's the trigger.
Okay.
So we are, you know, at 10,000 square feet, requiring it at 10,000 square feet and above for everything, you know, we're, we're quite a bit, you know, more strict in that sense. And then going below 10,000 square feet and having, capturing projects beneath that, you know, it's, it's even more strict, so.
Do you think it's necessary to be, to be more strict than the standard MS4 requirements?
I I, I think there's a, you know, each project is different, though, too, you know, so that's what I, the other thing that I see is that if we, in, in theory, are relaxing the applicability thresholds, but still leaving that avenue for an administrative review, we're giving ourselves the opportunity and the latitude to look at each project on a project-by-project basis, and, and still impose requirements that we see fit. We're not just doing a sweeping across-the-board requirement, where I, I guess, in my opinion, just having seen the implementation of the bylaw over, you know, a few years at least, I don't see that we're gaining a whole lot of value beyond going, going well, and beyond what the MS4 permit requirements are. And I, and I try to see it, obviously, from an engineering standpoint, and again, being a steward in the environment and not wanting to impair water quality, that's all very important, and that's not what certainly we're trying to do here, is negatively impact that, but we've also got to think of, you know, what's in the best interest of the town, and we have these, you know, folks that are coming in, wanting to develop or invest in the town, increase the tax base, and I've heard it more than a few times, that people are sometimes shy away from developing these sites because of the stormwater requirements. They can go elsewhere and not have to, to, to put up with such onerous requirements, basically, and the cost that's associated with it.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Rich?
Yep.
Thanks for showing up tonight, Jared.
Yeah, no problem.
You're on a subject that, it's no secret, but I have been, I have thought, and I'm talking about residential development, that this bylaw that the town has is overkill. I've seen what it's done to people, I've seen what it's done to their yards. Jeff and I went on a run a couple of years ago. It's ridiculous.
Yeah, it's a gravel pit.
So I'm glad that you finally sat down, and we're, we're looking at this. And again, I'm talking mainly about the, the residential. My only question is, if the state's law or MS4 is one acre, why can't we just go along with that?
We, we certainly can, you know, and that's kind of what we're, but, you know, we got to be careful, too, because there, there may be certain cases that we still want to capture these projects, you know, and I'm thinking of, you know, if it's we still want to capture these projects, you know, and I'm thinking of, you know, if it's just, just below an acre, and we've got people clear cutting and stumping lots and, you know, where there's no mechanism for the town to review that. That could be a slippery slope too. So I, I just think that at, at that point personally, in my opinion, I think having some review process um, up to and including, you know, the, the one acre, um, i- is beneficial. You know, and that's not unheard of either. I mean, that's not to say that there aren't towns. So the bylaw that we're kind of crafting right now is based on a mo- model bylaw that time bond has worked on for other communities. So this is pretty typical. I think we're in the driver's seat to, um, you know, direct them as to how, how much latitude we have within that administrative review portion, so that the threshold between ten thousand and an acre. Um, and again, on a project by project basis, it gives us just that opportunity, um, you know, to impose different requirements if we need to. I just worry that there may be, you know, I don't want us to just set it at an acre and then find out, you know, that there's certain projects that we didn't necessarily consider that we got to come back to now. Maybe we got to reconsider the bylaw again. I just think it's, you know, we're kind of easing into, um, different applicability criteria, basically.
Direction in my opinion, because.
That's, that's it. I guess we're taking, uh, at, at least, um, you know, one step forward here.
And I like the three, the three thresholds that, you know, that, that, that'll trigger a lot of things right off the bat for people.
Well, are the three thresholds going to be with this new bylaw or is it just going to be under an acre? And then you can have your, you know, your review and then you can decide if it's, let's say it doesn't meet the three, let's say it only has one, but it's a real, you know, a real winner. You could still have the authority to make them do something for stormwater, right?
That, that's kind of the idea. Yeah, that, that's correct. So the, the basis for the administrative review, that's exactly right. We'll still look at some of those same criteria. And it will, it'll be likely, um, you know, obviously the, the area over ten thousand, we'll look at slope. You know, we'll consider, you know, properties over ten dot, ten percent, um, slope a- at, at a minimum. Um, or we could also look at you, um, the way that time bond and, and we've been talking about it is it could be non-residential development. You could look at the amount of impervious area that they're going to increase. Um, or you could look at it on a percentage basis, percentage of lot area could be twenty-five percent. That's, that's sort of typical. And we have, we'd have the leeway in the administrative review to, to kind of distinguish between commercial and residential. So that, that's another thought.
My question is this, and, and, and this is, this is good, uh, but would you open yourself up to some kind of an issue like so? Uh, applicant A comes in, three quarters of an acre, you say, you don't have to do it. Applicant B comes in, three quarters, say, yeah, you gotta do it.
Well, that's it. That's, that's just it. Yeah.
You don't want to say, well, you let this guy do it. Then you start turning into a thing where, you know, you've got to explain yourself.
Exactly. So what I think is part of our, our plan here is that you look at the current bylaw, the chapter sixty-six and sixty-seven, which sixty-six is land disturbance and stormwater management, then sixty-seven is just stormwater management requirements. So we've got a whole bunch of technical standards basically spelled out in a bylaw, which is really not necessary. The bylaw can be more concise and what we should have spelled out in there is that we can promulgate rules and regulations under the bylaw. So if we consolidate it to one chapter, allow the promulgation of rules and regs and then spell out more of that administrative review process in the rules and regs. So we avoid just that. So it's not so, um, you know, that it's very objective and not subjective and that, um, you know, there's no inconsistencies there. We got to be consistent with that review process. So that's what we would look to do as well. We would, you know, um, promulgate these rules and regs under the bylaw.
One other thing.
Yep.
And that, this is good. I think this is headed, like I say, heading in the right direction. The process itself, what happens now is someone comes in, they come back, they get their planned on, works all done. They come in for their final approval, they hire an engineer, he shows up at the meeting and we say, well, we don't have all our answers yet. Now the guy's going to go back, pay an engineer to come back. Can, is there a way that we can, this can be all done through your department before we even get it? In other words, we get a memo from you, say, I reviewed stormwater management. I'm okay to approve it. And then they come in and see us. So we don't have this back and forth thing. And it's, and it's not the town's fault. All right. A lot of times we get the thing, you get it three days before the meeting. I'm not, you know, I'm not faulting anyone on this, but it, it's just a process. We end up having an extra meeting a lot of times. Whereas if you had this all settled, you know, you reviewed it, uh, you reviewed their drawings, you went out and did a site visit, you're okay with it. So now we have that memo, now we can approve the project. That's my other question.
I know that's what we've always strived for. I know when we were doing a lot of the reviews internally, I know, I don't know what's been happening the, the couple of years I've been gone here. Um, but I know Mary and I work closely, you know, to, to make sure that we've got complete applications. And that if we can review them internally, we do that in a timely fashion. You know, I'm sure that the project proponents too are very um, hot to get their project in front of you, right? And get it going. And even if they don't, maybe there's a disconnect between them and their engineer and what's been submitted. I don't know if that's part of it as well. Um, you know, what we can try to, we can certainly look at potential for streamlining.
Yeah, what I'm saying is
That process.
All the missed connections should be between you and the engineer.
Yeah.
Before we get it. Now there's no, now we get the plan that's approved. We get a memo. If it takes you an extra two weeks because of that, that's fine.
Yeah.
You don't want him showing off. You gotta go back because you haven't answered all the questions. That's all.
So I think what, what would happen then now under, um, you know, revised bylaws, that that administrative review would be happening. That's, that's that portion will be happening before it ever gets to you and it may, I don't know that it needs to get to you after that point. You know, if we made a determination whether it doesn't apply, um, you know, if it's not meeting that threshold of an acre for a full permit review, review, then I don't know that it needs to, to come before you. So that's something else. That's a question for time bond and um, that may be just, you may see the volume that's actually the volume of projects that come before you. Um, you know, may, may not be the same and may decline a little bit.
Jared, this is, um, you know, do you know what like the surrounding areas, other towns that surround Oxford, what, what their, um, limit is?
I don't have that in front of me, um, just now. I, I could get it to you. I did, we did look at a multitude, you know, and time bonded as well. Um, so we have that information on file. That's something I could get to you o- offline if you'd like to see it.
Yeah, that would be interesting to kind of see.
Typically, again, it's typically been if it's not an acre, sometimes it's forty thousand square feet. You see a lot. Some towns that have implemented a similar structure to what we're looking at, they still have that sort of administrative review process um, for projects less than that. Um, sometimes it's twenty-five thousand square feet um, or above. So I can get you more details on that.
Thank you.
Rich, I just got one thing.
Okay.
Um, so Jared, back to the, I'm not trying to beat a dead horse, but back to, so a person comes in and buys a piece of property at the house, everything's existing already. They, they, they purchased the property and again, they have no, no, no way of knowing that this stormwater management is a, a swell or whatever on their property and they fill that in. And
Wow.
This, you have no enforcement to go to that homeowner and say, look, you need to revert this back because they're going to say, well, nobody ever told us, no, no one ever showed us any of this. I guess my point is, is, and again, if it does damage to town property, God forbid it, it, you know, this is a big accident. The homeowner is not culpable because it's not being shown on their deed. Is that, am I correct in assuming that or?
Yeah, we, you know, we haven't, we haven't run it. In, in my experience, I haven't run into that issue. And that may just be, a- again, maybe lucky or that may just be, again, some of these things fly under the radar.
Yeah.
Um, because we don't, it's not like we have people that we're sending out um, on a regular basis
Right.
To follow up. Once the project's been built and signed off on, um, the post-construction follow-up, it's, it's tough. And we do, we send letters out where we see violations, you know, where we have issues, there's issues now that we're dealing with from some flooding and icing issues.
Yeah.
Um, i- that we, we go ahead and we send them letters, we try to resolve it. Um, but that could very well be, if we really tried to plant our feet in the ground and enforce it, we may not have.
I like to say, because the, the homeowner is going to come back and say, well, when we purchased this property, no one ever, there's nothing in, in a purchase and sales agreement that said that we couldn't do, this is my property, I can do what I want on my property, even though there's a swell or a catch basin or whatever on there. And again, again, I guess it goes back to more that I think that this really does need to be put on the homeowner's deeds, no ma- no matter what.
No, I, I, I certainly tend to agree. So that's something that we can, we can look at incorporating.
Okay.
Okay. Well, you said one interesting thing to me, Jared. I, I missed you when you left because we, we were getting timely turnaround.
I missed you too, yeah.
And, uh, we had to go out to third party reviews and that just prolonged everything by another month basically, so.
Yeah, we'll do, um, we'll do our part, um, you know, as we get settled in here to, to try to take some stuff back in internally. Um, you know, we don't have necessarily the support of a staff engineer here, but we have myself obviously, and we've got our DPW project manager who helps out as well with the reviews. So we'll tackle what we can and hopefully reduce the amount that needs to be sent out.
Thanks for coming, Jared. Appreciate it.
Yeah, no, you're welcome. I, I don't know if, um, I know on the agenda, if you, we were going to talk about some other projects as well. I don't know.
Tony's coming up to bat.
Yeah.
Tony is coming up. All right. I want to steal his thunder.
Okay. Tony, the planning director report.
Good evening, everyone. I'll be, um, I'll be brief, just two updates. Um, one is, uh, BVO went before the board of selectmen, um, last week. And, um, selectmen gave the green light to enter into a host community agreement. Um, as I understand, that's, that is in the works or to, to come into the works, I should say. Perhaps, um, sometime this spring, um, or in, I should say, maybe in the coming weeks, if not sooner. Um, there would be some type of filing for, for site plan. Um, BVO is the, um, project over at Pioneer Drive. Uh, may recall, they had their community um, public meeting is required back in November. I think it was November tenth, right around there. Um, I think it was my first week here, so, um, so they are, um, moving forward. The, um, second item I had as well is just to provide a quick update. And I see Jared is still on here as well and he can certainly fill me in if I'm missing anything, uh, with respect to the Eastland project. Um, so as, um, I have some notes here from Chad Boardman, who was at the last meeting when we had them before us and the note here reads that, um, they have met with the fire chief and they're conducting the last of pre-blast surveys in the area. Um, Chad estimates that the first blast would be in about three to four weeks. Um, but that they will inform the town at least two weeks in advance as they are still in the process of getting all of the requirements in place. And so others, uh, note in here is that they've taken water samples, um, and that is for basing of testing. They have done their several check dams have been placed as additional safety measures along the access road as well as for rain events. And they have proceeded with clearing of overgrown vegetation at the existing detention pond near Route twenty. And, um, notes here that the, that the detention pond, that that's been completed, should say. Um, so we just wanted to share that and, um, part of this is that we will be following up with them too sometime this month to check in on, on their um, status of their project. Um, but I just wanted to let everyone know and should have another update, um, if not at the next meeting, the meeting thereafter. So those are the two items, um, quick update on BVO and, um, Eastland Partners. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Hey.
Rich, I got a question.
Tony, Tony, I ha- I happened to, uh, you did mention the, the mill on Cummings Road. Well, guess what? Someone has bought it. Okay, there's a sign up on there that says it's been sold. Uh, that's that old mill on, uh, that's on the French River that has an old antiquated dam in there. And, uh, I don't know who lets the, uh, Corps of Army Engineers know that some new owner has it now and they can now finally get rid of that old dam that's, uh, you know, has, hasn't had the need to divert water in some time. So.
You never know, Rich.
Well, I, I, I told, I let the buyer beware because maybe they're getting into more than one antiquated mill structure. They're getting into also a dam on a river.
Yeah, we will, um, we will follow up on that. Certainly, um, we've gotten many, many phone calls. Uh, inquiries with respect to that parcel.
I, I was surprised to see the sold sign on it.
Yeah. So that's, that's interesting. Progress, I guess.
I guess I just have one thing with the Route twenty project that, again, a lot of this building and, and all these, these, um, pad developments was contingent on that directional like going, a, a, a signal light going in there and, and also the Route twenty, um, uh, new, uh, you know, roadwork. That's not, I guess, that, that's scheduled till twenty twenty-two, I think, the last report I saw.
Yes, Tony, is the Route, the Route twenty, uh, prints you gave us didn't show much of a change in the roadway there. So it looks like there's no deceleration lanes or anything coming out. It's going to happen at, in a later date, I guess. I guess that's the way they may be doing it, so.
Yeah, that, that was my, that was my impression. Um, s- still with, you know, and, and again, we'll be we'll, we'll be following up on this project too. So, you know, I, obvious, as mentioned last time, um, the, the pad sites and getting understanding where they stand with that as we move forward. And, uh, and again, any modifications that, um, that need to be done um, that it come before this board, um, so the way the plan to record
Yeah.
Is accurate. Um, so that's, that's all that I have for now, but it, yeah, it's, I do have it, um, on my radar.
Tony, has Eastland told you, uh, given you any kind of time frame as to when they might come before us for their project for the residential pad or is that on hold or are they working on that?
So I don't, I don't have any information, uh, with respect to their timeline um, on the residential and, um, I don't know if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, um, I don't know if, uh, Jeff, Jared's still on, if he had any info on that piece. So I make sure I'm not missing anything.
I, I think they're, from what they told us, Tony, I think this is going back to our initial site meeting and I don't, and I was kind of disjointed. Half the group was up looking at one area, um, I, I think they're going to be there for a number of years clearly, right? It's a pretty large scale development. So they didn't say anything precise in terms of timeline, but it sounds like it's, it's several years out. Um, that their focus is going to be on getting things pad ready, building out the commercial side, really in its entirety and, and then move um, to the rear of the site and to start with the residential portion. So I think overall timeline up there, they, they've said, I think what they mentioned before was upwards of, you know, ten plus years that they could be there. Um, so it's, it's a long, long lead time, this, this project from what
Yeah.
They're anticipating, but again, it's very preliminary too.
They, they told us that when they first came here.
Yeah.
They told us that it's going to take them about two years just to get phase one done with blasting and getting the pads ready. So and Jeff, I, 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 I want, Tony, I want to make sure I understand what they said to as far as the traffic light goes. Eastland is going to put in all the infrastructure. And it'll be prepared. So all we got to do is install the light, but that light's not going to be installed from day one, right? Am I?
No, 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 but I thought the state, the state we, uh, and the road improvements, when the, the, the new plan for the state was that there wasn't going to be any, any light there.
No, I, I thought that Eastland said they agreed to it.
Yeah.
That's why we're having this conversation and that Eastland was going to put on all the infrastructure.
Yes.
And the state was going to allow them to do it.
But the new, the new plans that the state showed us, there was no light. The, the last plans I saw, the newest ones, there was no signal light, signal station light in that area.
No, but all, all, and all the conduits and everything else are already going to be planted under the pavement. From what I, what I saw on that plan, there was a note saying, and, uh, light, light.
Okay.
That wasn't the whole plan. They must have multiple da- detail sheets that Tony didn't want to send us because it'd be
I, I, I just know a lot was contingent on that light being there.
I think it's even going to be divided in there for the time, for the beginning. I think they're going to, even if they put that stuff in there, there's not going to be an opening to allow a left-hand turn. It's going to be divided through that area. That's going to have to be repaired in the future if that, this comes to pass.
The traffic light might not be installed until after the hundred condos sold.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, the, um, the way that it was explained is that you're correct. They're, they're absolutely Eastland. And DOT is part of the larger project. They'll install the underground conduit, um, in preparation for a future signal, but the way that it was explained to us is that they can't put the signal in, um, signals are, are warranted by, there's certain signal warrants, right? There's six or seven traffic signal warrants, um, as part of MUTCD. A lot of it is based on peak traffic volumes, that sort of thing. They can't, um, put in a traffic signal for anticipated traffic flow. They need to wait until the actual build out is complete and see. They need to wait until the actual build out is complete and see, and actually do a study to see what those traffic volumes become. Um, to see if a, a signal is justified. So that's what they're doing.
And that's why it might not be until there's a hundred or two hundred condos sold, right?
Next decade.
What it's going to be.
But I, I guess I, I wouldn't want to see, I, I, I didn't see any plans where it was, that road was going to be a. I wouldn't want to see a left-hand turn being made at, at that, at that intersection of going into the place.
No, but they could, they could insist on a right-hand turn. My only concern is the large trailer trucks for the.
Yeah.
Commercial property and that'll come up during a uh, you know, whatever goes in there.
Okay.
Yeah, I had concerns about those trailer trucks going down in, in eight, eight degree plus.
Oh.
Uh, slope heading to Route twenty.
Yeah. And, and Mr. Chairman, if I may, so as of, and as of right now, um, Eastland doesn't have any, um. They have not identified any commercial entities going there. Again, in their, uh, in their layout plan, they did show a gas station, right? They showed multiple pads there. Um, one of my first, first meetings with, uh, with Chad was just to discern if they had anyone in the, um, in the works, if you will. Um, so therefore I could gauge too, as, as, as we get um, inquiries from potential um, commercial entities looking for space and so on. Um, and of course, that will, you know, that will um. Uh, help guide, right? Dictate what, um, what additional requirements may be needed on twenty, so. And uh, it was interesting with respect to the, with respect to the plans, uh, when I, when I asked DOT. Uh, that is what they sent and shared with me to be the most recent. Um, there may be other drafts prior, um. Uh, that I'm just not aware of, but that was the uh. The most current plan that they've, that they sent, although dated twenty twenty, we'll acknowledge. Um, but that's, that's what we have right now to work off of, so.
Yeah, well, they, I, when they did propose the pad site thing, they had another lane on Route twenty.
Yeah.
Just, just to get into this, just to get into this, their, their development, you know, that's not showing up on the uh.
Right.
Revised uh, Route twenty uh, design right now. All right, anybody else?
Um, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Norman for the discussion. There being none. I vote yes. Jeff?
I vote yes.
Greg? Christine?
Yes.
And Dale?
Yes.
And Norman?
Yes.
Okay, carried unanimously. Have a good night.
Thank you.